There's not a lot.
What's the brew of whiskey you're drinking there?
It's Brew Doctor Kombucha. Yes, the strawberry lemongrass that we've been on medicinal. I brew my own, so I'm always curious as to if you're coming near. Yeah.
Yeah.
Make no mistake.
I'm actually there actually in snake, that's quite remarkable. Hush fell over there.
There we go.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order for the council business on Toluquait Territory. And I'll call for an adoption of the agenda.
I'll do it at 10:51.
Okay, sorry. And I'll call for a adoption of the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting held January 14, 2019.
Move adoption, second.
Oh yeah, Billy, sorry. Thank you.
In favor.
So move 14, 2019. Move adoption, second. Call vote. So moved. And adoption of the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting held January 31, 2019.
Move adoption, second.
Call vote. So moved. Now, is there any public comment on the agenda?
No, I'm just signing out by my own thing.
Okay. So then we have a delegation from Devon's and Tifong for the ACRD Alberta and Claquahut Regional District Financial Plan Presentation.
This is where, okay, I would, I'd like to move on the 10 minute time mark.
Six.
Call for motion, I mean call for vote. Okay, so moved.
Very good. This one here?
Yep.
And pointed which direction?
You don't actually have to point it.
Look at that.
It should just be.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much for orientation session of the strange beast that is the regional district. And so regional districts cover most of British Columbia, there are 27 of them. And they are a sub, but so why do they exist? So we are local government for unincorporated areas, also known as electoral areas. We're also a sub-regional service body where we can have two or more regional areas. So electoral areas, municipalities, a combination of two or more of those participating together. We also provide services across the region and the example we have on the slide is our 911 system. And we also act as a lobbying group in the same way that municipalities can lobby. We will can join in and make that voice bigger and more inclusive from a geographic area. Sometimes even including other regional districts besides as well. So there are lots and lots of service options and how, this is a slide that, that we used for the LGLA presentations that me and another. So how do these services come to be? And so the first thing to do is identify a service. And here are some examples of different types of services from different regional districts around. The second thing to do is say who else, who do we have in common with us that also has this service need? Who has similar constituents to us that needs a service? And it could be two or more areas. It could be a local service where maybe it is just us after all. And very rarely, in fact, I don't know if I can think of a service that a regional district provides that has one participant and that participant is a municipality. Typically, if there's a service and it's just one participant, it's sub-regional where it's a municipality and one or two electoral areas, et cetera. Or it could be regional or it could be multi-regional. I've been involved in a number of multi-regional services where in one case five regional districts get together and, and create a, create a service body that, that looks after the whole area. So the huge flexibility in the service delivery options. The next thing to contemplate then is how is the service actually going to be delivered? We've decided what the service is, what the need is. We've decided who's going to participate in that service. Now, how are we actually going to deliver it? So the next column is public contract. Well, that might be maybe the regional district contracts with one of the municipalities to deliver the service. Next one is private contract where it's not a municipal body at all, but rather a, maybe a for-profit contractor or even a society in some cases can be used to deliver certain types of services. And then arms length, and that usually is used to describe as maybe incorporated bodies that you often see economic development corporations, et cetera, that, that the regional district will, will create and, and, and they will have a board of directors themselves. Aren't on this slide that are, that are good, that are important to contemplate. And that is how the governance works and how the pay, the cost for the service is recovered. One of the things that is super flexible since maybe the early 2000s is governance and funding models. So matching the distribution of the costs to the participants in ways that make sense. The default is based on the value of land and improvements. And, and that's typical of lots of taxation and that's usually how it's recovered, although it can be a flat tax like a parcel tax or a frontage tax or something like that of ways. It could be done in population or it can be done just on some sort of formula of usage or something like that. And then governance is the same. There can be all kinds of custom governance functions that to make decisions about the administration of the service. So the services that Tofino participates in at the regional district, you can see some regional services and some sub-regional services. And we say propose there, the multiplex is actually a service that has gone through the service establishing bylaw process, but it isn't really active as an active service delivery. I think most of you, all of you, when it, when it has been on the, on presumption that the grants go forward and all that kind of good stuff. Then there is already a mechanism in place to cover the net shortfall, funding shortfall of operating that service and how to govern it, et cetera is all in place. Transit is something that I think later this year is, is likely to go to an alternative approval process to go through and ask the electorate for permission to, to and regional districts. Is that municipalities, any service that this council thinks will benefit the residents, businesses, visitors of, of the district of Tofino, you generally have the power to create it unless of course you need to borrow to do it, in which case they would go to the taxpayers and ask for permission through one of the mechanisms in the community charter and local government act. And the regional district services, the default is that we've got to go to the electorate to ask for permission to deliver that service. One of the main reasons is because the participatory question about service delivery. The board of directors' membership, in our case, we have 13 participants and because of the size, population wise of Port Alberni, they have two members on the board, so 13 with one of them being two, means a 14 member board. The electoral area directors are elected at the same time as the municipal elections. And our treaty first nations, their elections happen at different times. In fact, we've got two of them this year. The chair of the board is elected from amongst his or her peers and that's done each day. Here's where we're sending for the rest of the year, noting that, you know, that's, that's, that's a council decision. It could be rescinded from time to time. So in our case, we have six electoral areas with three member municipalities and we have four treaty first nations. Our structure is much like yours in that the board is thought to have one employee, that's me. And then, then from me, then we create a structure beneath me that delivers the services that the board of directors has decided that the taxpayers need and that they have provisioned to provide. Also, there's a, a series of, there's a committee structure that, that the board uses in one way or another. In some cases to send information or just get their, and I imagine your committees much in a similar fashion. So there's me, there's four department heads, there's four other managers and about 19 staff. So we're, we're, you know, so we're just under 30, I think, like that. We have six water utilities, a couple of airports, a couple of, a couple of landfills, a transfer station, few things like that. All right, now to the interesting part. Any questions before that before and we're both here to take questions whenever you'd like as well.
Okay, so we'll move on to the financial plan. So at the regional district, we have to adopt a five-year financial plan. The municipalities are expenditures cannot exceed our revenues. We have to have a public consultation process, so we have some official meetings, but we also do, I call it the traveling road show out to many of the electoral areas and try to reach as many of the communities as we can. So I think this is our fifth or sixth meeting in the last two weeks. And the plan has to be adopted by March 31st. Nothing can be incurred unless it's in the plan and it can be amended at any time. So the rules, which are different from a municipality, is the areas are only charged for the services they provide. I always think of them, we had a really good year, but the airport did not. I can't move money between them. This also includes the allocation of staff time. So we have to make a, an allocation across all of our services and where we think our staff time is going to be spent throughout the year and charge each service appropriately. Similar to, I believe, how you do stuff here, we take the operational budget for each service and those, unless we're going to change the level. Then we also need to consider what the strategic priorities are of the board. So the board got together in the beginning of January this year to identify their priorities. And that's kind of what I'm going to focus on this year. So the goal is to adopt a plan that has resources and enough staff time to attempt to achieve everything that's in the plan. Obviously, things don't always go exactly how they are planned, but. So one of the major priorities for this year is a regional organics program. We got a $6 million grant from the strategic priority fund to implement some form of organics across the entire regional district. We need to divert our organic materials from both gas management systems. This is a very large undertaking and there's, as I read the report the other day, there's tons of problems. There's going to be a lot of decisions coming. We're not looking for a cookie cutter approach that is going to meet the needs of Tofino at the same time as it does for Bamfield or the city of Port Alberni. We really are going to look at each area and figure out what's going to work best for everyone. So we have Tetra-Tep Consulting helping us out with that right now and options. And then there'll be some community engagement starting here shortly. Asset management, I believe you guys are well on your way for an asset management program. Slightly different in the regional district in that we need to build multiple plans because each service needs to have its own plan. So we just adopted our first plan for the Beaver Creek Water System last month. And we have a strategy and, or we have a policy and a draft strategy. So we're, we're getting there. We have some strategic priority fund money for a staff position to do this over the next two years. So we're making, picking up some momentum in that setting. So the, that is the snowplow that we got through ACAP or federal grant money. There's some big projects happening out there this year. We got 5.4, oh, just 5.4 dollars, 5.4 million dollars of funding to resurface the other air, the other apron and taxiway. There is also going to be a upgrade to the terminal apron safety. I guess now that there are bigger planes are landing, opportunities, including developing strategic plans for the lands that surround the airport. The airport is incredibly expensive to run and the Transport Canada regulations are, figure out every possible way for it to generate revenue so that we can keep, keep it off of the taxpayers. So that's the goal for the year. Agriculture initiatives. So the planning department for many years has had an Alberni Valley agricultural plan, but there was really identified that there's a coastal and I guess you'd almost call it aquaculture agriculture as well, but an aquaculture component that was kind of missing. So last year they did a coastal addendum to it. And in that there's a bunch of initiatives that are identified to be implemented. So the board is going to, nope, did consider $15,000 towards the west coast component of the egg plan this year. So it'll be interesting to see where that goes. They've also done a two-year what's on your form, a bit of a social media presence and trying to get people thinking about where their food. Emergency coordination. So all of the local governments on the coast out here have their own emergency programs. But a few years ago, I believe in 2016, it was identified that there really could be some coordination that was kind of missing just so everyone kind of knows what their neighbor's plans are and recognizing how close everyone is out here, but how far away you possibly are from outside help. So we got a protective services manager last year as an employee. So that's one of the duties on his list this year is to coordinate some meetings. Like I said, it's not to replace the current programs, just to make sure there's a coordinated approach. In the process of considering a west coast transit service, it would link Tofino and Yuculit. There's many possible stops or a few possible stops along the way. There's lots of options. So I think there's going to be some public engagement coming up here shortly. I believe BC Transit is working on it right now. And then following that, there'll be a service option. There's multiple, whether a conventional transit or a paratransit, there's all sorts of options as to what it could look like. So finding out what the public wants before the board makes a decision about what they would like to take to the electorate for consideration. The hospital district, the hospital district is a separate legal entity, but run by the Claquahut Regional District it is. So we fund 40% of the capital projects for the hospital facilities in our area. Island Health providing the other 60%. So the projects for this year are the Tofino General Hospital helipad redevelopment, which I believe is actually underway. And the west coast general hospital, they're doing a big renovation to the emergency room, which is also underway. And the debt for the west coast general hospital is going to start retiring here in 2020. And the board has recently made the decision that as that debt and those costs associated to the debt kind of disappear, that they would like to start developing a reserve fund. They are, it's definitely not on the top of their priority list, but every dollar that we can save is going to prevent from borrowing and the debt costs related to that. So we'll start to build that next year. So the financial plan process is well underway. Our committees have seen most of our major services. We have a couple more to discuss on Wednesday this week. And then they'll see the entire budget next Wednesday at our official public consultation session. And we'll give it first reading at that time. And it'll be lots of work to be done or discussion to be had, but we're definitely well on our way. So once we get the financial plan, how it gets out is a little bit different than a municipality as well. Oh, that's me. It is really how I feel these days, actually. So the plan then creates a requisition amount in a municipality that translates into tax rates. But in a regional district setting, that's not really how we do it. We actually just kind of send the district to Tofino bill and say, this is what we need from you. Can you tax on it? And the surveyor of taxes does the collection for us in the electoral areas. So the question of what's your tax rate or mill rate for the year does not work in a regional district setting. Each area can have its own tax rate. And in fact, in the electoral areas, it can even depend on whether you're getting fire protection or not or water or not as to what your tax rate is because you fall in multiple areas, so. And the one other piece about that is the multipliers. You guys can kind of set and change as you want over time. And for us, it's set by the province by regulation. So that's another piece that's slightly different than municipalities. So I think that kind of overviews everything we have going on this year. And both Doug and I are happy to answer any questions.
I hope I don't have any questions.
Like I say, a question and not so much about, what's called, is it thinking of being coordinated with?
Yes, that is definitely one of the materials. I don't speak organized very well, but one of the, yes, it's well aware that both district of Tofino and the city of Port Alberni actually are both going to be needing somewhere to dispose of their biosolids, aren't they? Biosolids, so.
And we've met with your consultant on one or two occasions now. And I think we've got another milestone to get behind this until we reconvene to sort of talk about sort of how our, how our plan looks and how it all fits together. Yes.
And also on that, is there any thought of capturing the gases that are created from composting facility?
So there are many and they're just in the preliminary discussion. So odor obviously is a concern with making sure that's minimized for both the Alberni Valley and out here. And I think they're looking at all sorts of technology and will be part of the public consultation process as well.
One of the most important objectives of the, of diverting the, the material is to avoid creating, is to minimize the creation of landfill gas. The, the landfill in Port Alberni or just outside of Port Alberni is by virtue of the cumulative tonnage measured on a rolling average over the last year of the gas, we're trying to avoid hitting that trigger and therefore avoid the investment on the gas capture infrastructure. So that said, as Terry mentioned, so then what happens to the gases that are created through the composting process or whatever process that ends up being used, that's, that's one of a wide variety of, of options, of considerations on the various options out there thus far, early days for that part.
Yeah, there's good options for generating electricity and it can also be condensed and used.
Thank you. For clarification, you talk about protective services. Is that kind of like a bylaw enforcement for ACRD or is it not in a different way?
No, so our protective service manager actually helps the volunteer fire department. So we have three volunteer fire departments that have volunteer chiefs. So he's kind of going to support them, make sure all the regulatory parts are in line. And then in the Alberni Valley, he's actually going to be our emergency coordinator. So he'll raise in that area. And then for Bamfield, they have a volunteer coordinator, so he supports her role out there. And then on the west coast, it will just be the coordination component and kind of getting that up and going until we decide if or what that looks like, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification because I know that in some of the land area, there's a lot of concern about that illegal dumping and things like that. And I just wasn't sure if, if there was any coordination with our bylaw, with TFAN and whoever else's territory is.
Right, so the illegal dumping.
I just wonder if it's ever been brought to their attention, so.
We do some work with the Central West Coast Forest Society and through that part of it. Yeah, they are keeping an eye on some of it for sure, yeah.
The truth is, is that's a losing battle.
Yeah.
It's a terrible problem, including in the Alberni Valley and we see it lots out here.
Yeah, I mean, let's not rule it out yet. Let's say grants are acquired and so forth, that there's still a necessity to go to the taxpayers of the regional district, including municipalities for any approval to proceed. Is that my understanding?
No, so we have an establishing bylaw that's for the operations of the facility only, so not the capital component. So if they were able to secure grant funding but needed a quarter of it to, because it wasn't a full grant and we needed money fundraised and build the facility, then the, the establishing bylaw is in place to operate the facility.
Thank you. And last question.
The first step was to get like a land use plan done for the area. So the planning department has drafted that and we haven't yet presented it to them there. I think there's a few options that are kind of, we'll call them low hanging fruit for lack of a better term, but they're not really huge revenue generators, but could, every little bit helps, so give us a little bit. And then beyond that, no, we're looking to other airports for their ideas and what they have been able to do that's been successful.
Right, so the communities and TFAN, who'd be the neighbor to the airport and so forth, could weigh in. I just think, you know, that there's got to be opportunity.
I can add to that, absolutely. That's a given. And at the west coast committee table, we've already been discussing this and how we really need the support of chambers of commerce and the communities and the Toluquait to really.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming all the way up.
Thanks for eating in our restaurant.
Yes.
Our pleasure.
Sounds good.
So now we have a delegation from the Tofino Bible Fellowship regarding an update on District Lot 114. Affordable housing project.
I think there's a bylaw that says they have to stay in those dust. Each one is going to take a role in explaining who we are and why we're standing in front of you. And then I'm going to sum up at the end and just hopefully you respond to any questions you might have. The affordable housing program is just really quite an exciting one. We've really enjoyed the partnership. It's been a long and slow process. And part of the exercise is communicating back and forth. And I think because it's a new council and we're starting some pretty exciting time where we're coming from and just our vision for this program. And just respond to any questions because we do get feedback from the community. And we probably have a pretty clear sense, you get questions. And we want you to be able to say, no, we understand where they're coming from. You're the people you should talk to, et cetera, et cetera. So without any further ado, I'm going to introduce our housing committee. We have Melie Sadler, who's the chair of our board of directors as well. She'll make a presentation. And we'll start with Ken Sadler. He's going to give you a bit of a background. And I apologize, I make these up this morning. You know, they're handouts, so you just get a little keepsake for our visit. Last time we brought chocolates, but that just isn't going to happen. I was forced to.
Can we just record?
Thanks, Ken.
We continue.
Do you think that could go more than 10 minutes? Maybe we should have them.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the time. For many years, the district of Tofino has pursued opportunities to provide low-cost affordable housing. One initiative was the development of DL 114. The district had rezoned a portion of DL 114 for affordable housing. Establishing a housing committee in SARS had to be paused for different reasons. And in 2016, when the provincial investment in an affordable housing program was initiated, which encouraged local government and nonprofit partnerships, Tofino Bible Fellowship, TVF, approached the district with a proposal. And at the December 6, 2016 council meeting, the district council offered a letter of support in principle, which allowed TVF to begin applying for federal on the corner of Lot DL 114, accessed off of Peterson Drive. In the following months, the district reconstituted the Tofino Housing Corporation and hired an executive director to further the advancement and development of the affordable housing priority, which was in setting out the terms of partnership for the development of up to 55 affordable housing units and a small resource center on DL 114, accessed from Peterson Drive. This partnership has received grants from CMHC and the Rural Development Fund and recently completed an agreement for BC Housing Project Development Fund loan. These funds will allow the partners produce and design and develop plans to allow for rezoning and will further advance the construction grant application. To date, the partners have received confirmation in late 2018 that our project construction application has been advanced to the next stage. The partners are presently preparing an updated development and cost sharing agreement, which should be in place in the next few months. And we'll be having that meeting coming up.
Hi. I'm pleased to bring the bit of the history of Tofino Bible Fellowship because I feel it's really important and to kind of get the big picture. And, and we've actually been here quite a long time. My father and mother-in-law were of the generation that first began. The group actually in the late 60s went in Tofino for many decades since. We actually just became registered just in 1988. So yeah, a long time. But in the early 90s was kind of when I came on the scene and I was newly married. And part of the group, they were all sensing the increasing cost of land and related property development costs and for the next generation, you know, and even back then, you know, because it, it just had skyrocketed at that time. So TVF members began development of a subdivision known as Fellowship Lands, which if you're not familiar, it's Abraham Drive, Fellowship Drive, Harley Place. And 75 lot subdivision was sold at cost to local members of the community and is now fully developed. TVF retained one of the lots, purchased a three-bedroom modular home for that lot and then provides this unit as Canada Revenue Agency approved low-income rental housing. And applicants for that are selected based on need rather than any relationship with TVF. Because of the stated membership goals of TVF, the society, for example, some of our members begin a weekly lunch program. members began a weekly lunch program years ago, which has grown from a dozen or so guests beginning in the community hall to the Fish and Loaves Society, which currently provides lunch and donated food to average, to an average weekly attendance of 80 persons on Tuesday afternoons. So that's basically, you know, where we've come from. And currently, TVF has also established a community aid fund, which has and is used to assist persons in the community who are struggling with themselves or their families. So it's important to us to support them. The funds are also used to provide emergency support to persons or families overcome by unpristine personal disasters, educational expenses, or employment struggles. These funds are provided to anyone in the community who's faced with difficult personal challenges. And in addition to that, 10 years ago, TVF established a housing development fund to assist in the purchase of housing units that could be provided as low-income rental units to the community members present. So Bill's going to take the future.
Two and a half minutes for the future. So I'll just summarize what you have in front of the municipality. We had quite a bit of public interaction right up front. And it's waned a little bit just because we're patiently working through all the different processes. But we continue to get feedback from members of the community. The affordable housing issue certainly has not gone away. There's a lot of need growing in the community. And what we found in those discussions is housing is an important component, but a lot of people, to assist them to move for sort of that subsistence lifestyle to one of actually self-sufficiency requires programs. And that's why we included in our proposal a resource center. There's just a sense from finding an affordable spot that they can count on, they can go in there and lock their belongings in a place they don't have to pack them back for all the time. So what we felt, just because of the way the government had presented this funding option and because of that significant need and because of the desire to help people move on in their lives and their careers, yet stay in the community and raise families, that's an important component. And the opportunity is there, so we thought it's very important that we just push that button now. If they say no, then we have to rethink how that will play out to keep that issue alive. And the cool thing about that is if you build it correctly, and because it's so close to some of the services the municipality already provides, it's like almost like an auxiliary emergency resource center in a sense for a whole bunch of different events, from tsunamis to just large community training events, et cetera. So I hope you understand and appreciate just why we've put these two things together. Slow process, but really encouraged by the steps that are happening in front of us right now and the opportunity to actually start digging in the ground by the end of the year and beginning of next year. People are pretty excited about that, pretty cool stuff, eh? Okay, got eight seconds left for questions?
You can ask questions first.
Okay.
Thank you. No questions.
You're very welcome. I didn't put any contact information, but you'll find us running the streets of town anyway. I'll just be worried for your [inaudible].
I can't bear to live without asking you one.
Yeah, I know.
First of all, thank you for working with you a lot, but our new members of council have had the same opportunity. I wanted to ask you about the lot on Abraham, where the single-family trailer is. And just even with everything that's going on on DL 114, kind of if you're thinking about increasing density there or doing something there, if there's any way that...
Totally. When we first made the presentation to the council, we have an existing lot that is now used as a low-income housing, 30% rural market is what's revenue Canada says is qualification since how this funding is going to play out on 114. We've sort of kept that in the bank as an additional contribution that we may have to bring to the table. So you trade off one to get 20. So it's in the mix. It's part of our contribution to the community, one way or the other. BC Housing originally said to us, boys, Josie was at that meeting, boys, TVF, don't put that on the table. We may be able to fully fund the other one and you can build more housing there with other grants. So it's right now, let's keep it for affordable housing. But if it has to be traded off as equity, it's on the table. We're not fully onto it for any use now that it just promote affordable housing. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Okay? Good, thanks very much, you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for continuing.
One minute?
One minute.
Good, two minutes, sorry.
Ooh, good. It's cold times trying to look at papers.
Yeah, I want to do our most recent newsletter. You can keep what you want, pass on if you want.
Thank you. I think we'll run short. Do you have one more?
No, I only have five each.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Was that? Sorry for one short.
Give him a minute?
I did.
Again, as Josie or the mayor had asked in the early, or Counselor Anderson, do you need more than 10 minutes?
No, we'll keep it tight.
Okay. More time for questions, okay.
It's not the best venue, but we've had a request for information and didn't want to pass up the opportunity to at least give you an update of what's going on, what we've been doing. Yeah, and so in fact, yeah, living in a 10-minute time this, and what we're talking about is ecosystem service fees, a tool for engaging businesses and industry, land use, and relating to Tahaoka, First Nation, and the cost of us delivering a homeland that services everyone. And the ambitions of our people to have good economic footing, to be able to provide services to our people, and to deliver clean water, lots of salmon. You know, we're talking about something that can really be brushed over in 10 minutes, so I kind of skip a lot of the pre-contact and it's a really long presentation to get to this. But you know, Julian and I are here, we're really, we've been talking about our relationship to land that gets developed. You know, the airport people were just here, they could have heard, you know, how to develop that land. And I'm sitting there, it's really tough, you know, we've wanted to have that land transferred back to Taloukit. And now, you know, the tool to solving that and like the harbor air that pays a fee per client to our nation, people that use our trail on Mir's Island. So, you know, we've created a tool for businesses to contribute to our Guardian program. We've committed a five-year capital plan that a portion goes towards stewardship, a large section for cultural resurgence. And after presenting in the fall, we heard a lot of input on the model and the thing. But people get it that they can pay a fee and it's not going to go to Ottawa or the gymnasiums. There was a bus route discussion earlier. We probably have the bus go through our village to get our people to work. We probably contribute to stewardship treatment, to open our clam beds and have herring return. And we've committed a large amount of dollars to stewardship and salmon, capital projects for salmon. We have tons of salmon capital projects that are on the shelf and we just need funding for them. There's so many watersheds that forestry, Ministry of Forest, BC have walked away from and left in such disrepair. Stopped our other efforts with Central West Coast Forest Society, replacing all the culverts outside of Tofino to access the salmon habitat on the other side of the road. All of our Saqai habitat was destroyed, Sand River, Hydro Hill West, you would know, if you drove, if you drive past Larry Lake, that little lake up in the mountains, and you take a couple of sharp turns and at the bottom, you drive by Hydro Hill West. From the desk to the floor, for 200 meters, boulders above this size were removed and trucked to Portal Burning and then the water table in the dead of summer. And that's where the river is supposed to be. But from logging, all the boulders filled up the creek and right on the side of the ditch, there's Koho in the ditch water. And, you know, we've been in there two years now installing riffle pools. Now when you drive through, you don't see a high wave of boulders, you actually see pools installed that survive the winter flash. And those are, that's just one river of, I have a lot. I have a lot of rivers that I could tell you stories of this exact same in tranquil on boulders. How can you land a helicopter in there just because it's all fanned out wide with boulders? So we're promising money towards salmon capital as a win-win and large proportion for stewardship. Yet our ambition is to grow it towards our culture, a longhouse. We've committed a capital plan that have dollars for a longhouse this year. And we were told, give us something definitive, you know, 100 grand for two guardians. We could tell people that's where the money's going to go. We had a lot of uptick after our presentation in November, a lot of businesses come on and we formed an advisory group. And we have some, you know, harbor air and one of the other airlines is coming on board. And yeah, it's very relevant to the airport. They should be an ally. We declared an ecosystem service fee in 2008, as the same year the resort municipality had a tax for the hotel tax. And then it was increased to 3%, and we're still not included in it. And yeah, I mean, it'll be at tomorrow's RMI discussions as well. We're trying to create a tool that's, well, Julian will give some updates on our newsletter. You know, partly with Mir's Island, it cost us $5 million in court to protect Mir's Island and we still haven't recovered any of that. This goes along that, recognize the ecosystem that it provides, the services that we get from that. And we're bringing this discussion to Ukula, who's talking about water. And they're wanting to recognize Kennedy as first natural capital. Because if we don't have an economic system that can water, the water's heating up with all the open forest cut blocks and then it's hard on our salmon. We just have to do better. And we're certainly trying to do our best and create a system.
So I covered a lot of the things I was hoping to mention. These made it pretty clear, I think, to all of us that there's a great deal of history here and like all of Canada and communities all around. And I think a lot of communities are, don't have any confidence that the federal government is providing strong enough leadership. And tribal parks are starting to be a thing that's happening all over Canada. But an initiative like this involving a non-indigenous community and supporting a guardians program is a really unprecedented and I think something that would put Tofino on the map as a local grassroots reconciliation. I'll skip over that. I'm just, I just wanted to briefly tell you about what we've achieved since our launching program in November. We had a tourism summit co-hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, where we discussed with a lot of business owners and leaders in the community, what our vision was for the Travel Parks Allies Program. And that is to certify businesses as partners in advancing reconciliation and stewardship efforts here. And what most people have heard the most about, one of the 10 criteria is ecosystem stewardship fee. And so we've been working, I've been meeting with them and what they think would be a good way forward. 2019 is going to be our trial year. We're hoping that by 2020, we'll have a fixed pricing structure set up. And so we're reaching out to a lot of businesses. We've certified a number of them. And our priority is just to engage people and to have businesses come to us with an idea for how much they think is an appropriate amount to pay or what they think an appropriate stewardship fee model would be and they can pilot that for us. So really, our priority this year is to engage. And maybe I should leave it at that unless you don't mind me running an extra couple minutes. Won't take more than the other five. In January, we had our first Travel Parks Allies Advisory Committee meeting. Josie was able to be present for that. And we talked to a lot of leaders about what they thought we needed moving forward. I got a really lot of valuable feedback from them. And the biggest issues people raised were they wanted transparency and they wanted accountability. They wanted to know, like every year, what that money is going towards in a very simple concise way so that when a visitor comes to town and asks what this extra fee on their bill might be or however a business chooses to administer that fee, people can give them a straight answer. And so we've done that, I hope you do, with their two main projects. One of them is expanding the guardians program, hiring another six guardians, and now there are two and they've got a lot of administrative responsibilities, so they can't do everything they need to do on the land. And investing in critical infrastructure to help them do their jobs. And the second goal was to initiate a, a longhouse, yeah. Scoping the possibility of building a community longhouse, which would be a place for a culture can be showcased. And that's something that a lot of the tourism providers have been asking about. So we're really excited about that and we've addressed the concerns of our advisory committee and we're looking forward to continue work with them. And just the first of this month, I put out a survey, so we're trying to get businesses engaged more and try to figure out what the fee's going to be. That's where we're at for this year, just trying to make a stronger interface people interact with. A lot of outreach, the early years bond for me. And the year after, that's really what I'm going to be trying to address. So we have our website up and I'm constantly working on it, but it's pretty good right now. And trying to get business owners to, I kind of expected there'd be some business owners present, but yeah, check out our website and stay informed. Or give them my feedback, so I'm always available.
Well, I do, always do. Anyway, thanks for the presentation. As it's moved through stages and formulated, and I think, you know, we're about to do our strategic plan in the next couple of months. And I think what you're laying out about, you know, finding ways that we look in a very long term around sustainability and what makes this region thrive and makes us good neighbors and respectful acknowledgement as well of both our mutual needs and differences. I've some experience with paying the fee, as you know. And there were some even issues, you know, where's the accountability piece on the other side? And so I haven't been really very well informed, I think, about how you're planning on rolling out this fee or it's volunteer or it's this and that. And I, I'm not comfortable at all with the way it's rolling out, I have to tell you. Because I'd like something that's more transparent and broad. There's a few reasons for that, but just, you know, the business community, ultimately, you know, the sticker, but you know, that when customers are coming to them, they're paying, well, you know, and they're not going somewhere else because they don't have to be able to deal with that fee. It needs to be across the board. So the hotel, the roofed accommodation sector was a good model where you've got more than five rooms, you collect the tax, it goes through the government, comes right back. You know, they've got restrictions on it. I'm not 100% behind that, but there's been enough to this, but that both for the municipality but also in support of this, that we need to broaden what that tax is and that it's collected from everybody that is active in the territories. If you're... So, the hotel, the roofed accommodation sector was a good model where you've got more than five rooms. You collect the tax, it goes through the government, comes right back. You know, they've got restrictions on it. I'm not 100% behind that, but there's been enough to this, but that, both for the municipality, but also in support of this, that we need to broaden what, what that tax is and that it's collected from everybody that is active in the territories. If, if you're, uh, you know, surfing or kayaking or fishing or whatever, that, that point of sale, the tax is collected in that same way. And have you had conversations with people about that kind of model?
Yeah, there's been some in the advisory group meetings and, um, about locals, um, paying it, which is a little, can be a little tough, um, versus the visitor, um, across the board. That's why we've talked about the airport and airlines and, um, yeah, uh, and retail and, and restaurant. Uh, originally, we didn't have restaurants included, and, but yet the feedback was, well, no, we want it fair across the board. Why am I paying a fee and not the restaurants? So, um, yeah.
Sorry, I, I, the territory and, and that extended way around the ecosystem, that's an obvious place to start. If, to go to restaurants and so forth, they're, you know, like margins for businesses are, are small. So, you know, yes, you can add that percentage. Anyway, I just think that, you know, um, kind of getting some robust support around in that enacting that tax at a different level is a far better ideological differences and so forth.
I wish it were that easy. Um, we're creating this tool that shows a good benefit from both sides. We're committing the money to stewardship and culture. Um, but stewardship, we thought would be a big win and buy-in, barriers to remove.
Well, I really hope that, that we can, as a council, kind of really support the principles that are behind this. You know, like, that we too want to be stewards of this environment in a very robust way. And, and if that's a tool and so forth, anyway, that's my view.
You know, we're creating a tool that is win-win and collaborative. And, and I'm not supposed to talk that this is created because our members want to put a toll booth at Sutton or stop traffic at a Sauesta. Uh, the million people go through the park, the alienation of the land, the airport that we suffer under, the, the haring that has gone from the tour boats that scare them away. And they want to do an Aboriginal title case and just own all the hotels. Uh, you know, those are, these are all negative language, and I'm creating a tool for positive language. And it's tough, uh, without some momentum. And we're focusing on positive momentum. And, um, you know, there were, I don't know, more marches to say, we're not included, you know, across Canada. Trains going across the Cree land and stopping trains to get benefit from the things going through their territory. And we've done a small protest in the street in Tofino, and it slowly went on to other things. And I'm focused on trying to alleviate that pressure and create a tool. Uh, believe me, I wish it was across the board. I wish it was just one more airport and, and let's develop some more subdevelopments. But right now, our nation doesn't want to see more, uh, to our exclusion and, um, and impact.
Well, that's quite understandable. I appreciate you taking the time here to, uh, share this with us. And I know your views are passionate about it, and, and there's deep reasons for that. But I'd like to see a solution that really gets strong buy-in and gives the support that's needed for what you're doing.
One question, and it, it might revolve around what, I mean, obvious, you, you putting up on the board that where feedback is important. What do you see as the role of the District of Tofino and where, where can we be supportive in this? Uh, what, is there a direct mechanism or is it a more generalized support? Or do you see some really specific things that we could be involved with?
I'm not sure at the moment. I, uh, you know, at one point, I was wanting a piece of the water tax from Mirs Island. So, let's do that. You want to expand the reservoir and resolve the water tax, pay an ecosystem service fee from the district to Mirs Island. Where the property tax forever, all of the sub-developer fees were raised from 6,000, 12,000 for every lot developed. We don't get any benefit from everyone coming to buy land, the tax was raised, no new service provided, just a cash grab from the district. You know, we're not included in these structures. The resort tax went up last year and we were not considered. We couldn't, we, there was a chance to lobby there to say, but why aren't we including First Nations in this hotel tax? So, passing the good news on to the peers, it's a small community, uh, you know, build trust. And we're not, we're not wasting the money. We, we'll provide open books on where the money's going and, uh, the money's going to stay here. The economic multiplier is all going to stay in the town here. It's not going to go anywhere else. You get a seat in the hospitals and the lunch programs, in the gymnasium, it'll piss it. You know, no roof on the basketball court, you know, no couple, couple grand to perform. We, we don't even have a young drummer that can hold a circle. If you want an adult to hold a drum circle, you gotta pay a youth group fundraiser, go do a performance over there. They're willing, but we barely got a culture surviving. We don't got a longhouse, no language program. So, yeah, it's not even all anyone's issue, just, yeah. Uh, you have support, we need it, it's not going to go to waste, it's going to stay local. And, uh, we'll, we'll be very accountable with it, Toluqu and, uh, and open with where it's going. Try and share that out with people.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming. I think what you've done today by coming to council is asking us to be a part of a bigger dialogue at invitation. It's really important to me that you're here because councillors know that I've been engaged in conversations with you, but I don't want to be out ahead of council. It's important to me to hear what councillors think. And, uh, you know, if you're asking right now for, um, you know, moral support and a willingness to engage in dialogue, then I hope I can look at all of my fellow councillors and expect that that's what we can do in these beginning stages. I think that something I would like to further suggest is, um, we have a, a government-to-government dialogue coming up, a, a, elected-to-elected government dialogue coming up. And I, I think we need to engage with, with the elected chief in council and with the Huaqia as well to, to keep having this discussion and understand that it's deeper than just, say, Saqia leadership of the nation. And I think that's something that, that we really need to do. Um, when it comes to, you know, I don't want to dismiss them as technicalities, but I think councillor Bart brings up some really interesting points. And some of the feedback that I've heard back too from businesses, it's like, well, why don't you just take one of the tax points we already pay and raise it one? And, and then see if there's a way to have that redistributed back to the nation. You know, it's like an extra PST or MRDT or GST or whatever it is. But somehow, there's something in that notion that seems to, because as the municipality, we are creatures of the province. We exist by their grace, if you will. And so, I think keeping, uh, you know, our MLA and MP and others at that level kind of apprised of what's going on here is also important. And I know that you guys have been thinking about that because I know that we've talked about that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that I just had the most amazing opportunity to go up to Haida Gwaii. So, I just came back from Haida Gwaii. And to hear the conversations that are going on up there between their municipalities and the council of the Haida Nation and to, like, it's exactly the same. They're having the same conversations and asked what is happening here and then what is happening there. But one of the things that happened there is that all of this conversation I took part in over this last few days was in a beautiful longhouse. And the opportunity to sit in this incredible structure in a very traditional style of seating in the round and having these conversations was, I, I just came back here with such a strong sense of like, wow, we need to see that here, here in Toluqu territory too, so, I think.
15th, and that's a fund from federal government designed to implement Indigenous protected conservation areas. It's designed to buy private, private forest lands or tree farms and implement towards Canada's target for 2020. Um, so to apply to that, I have to have a lot of ducks in a row. Uh, namely, does the province even want to make a protected area? And secondly, do, do private forest lands or does Mamuk want to expropriate its lands and compensate it? So, I'm at reconciliation. The Board of Mamuk and the other four nations, as well of, uh, getting a letter of support from the Yukulut mayor. And I've sent a letter on to Josie and, uh, as well, getting our land vision, which is protecting Klaikau River Valley, uh, putting a buffer zone around Kennedy Lake to, uh, to contribute towards the health of the drinking water ambitions. So, it's a small snippet of what the land vision is, uh, and the letter of support we're seeking, if you wanted to.
That'll be on our Tuesday.
Letter of support another day, yeah, okay.
Um, Paul Anderson?
Yeah, I'm just, um, one bit of feedback I've heard is that, well, a couple of things. The, the tour operators, um, fish guides are, um, are quite readily, I think, accepted of, of the concept. And I think a lot of them are, are working towards that. I don't think it's as well-understood by retail and, and other types. And, and there might develop some resistance there, I don't know. But that's my sense of it, that, that it's not as well-understood. And the other thing is that, um, sort of businesses in Tofino seem sort of, are feeling like they're targeted and not everything else that exists and uses the land, what fish farms are and how they fit into the plan and the oyster farms, all those other businesses that exist in the larger territory, not just within municipality. And, um, and then there's also the, there's businesses that operate here that are sort of invisible in a way, like Tellus. They pull millions and millions of dollars out of our municipality. They use your territory to get their business here. Um, BC Hydro, you could say the same thing. And then, I don't know, maybe logging operations or stuff. And felt like if, um, if there was a sense that everything is sort of covered under this sort of plan and contributing, that it would feel a lot more fair other than just.
Yeah, well, I mean, things like forestry, we've been getting something on stumpage or something through the years, but we don't want to rely on that, right?
Of course not.
And, and same with the fish farms, um, contribution goes towards salmon. Uh, and we've done a lot with the, with the projects that they, they do fund. They, they're the only one at the table that's in discuss where they're located, so they do have an impact. They do have an impact and we want some move potentially, which is tough. So, we want to do that through a marine planning process and fair and talk about which ones are in front of fish creeks and eeggrass and stuff. And so, um, and I, you know, I wish I had a bigger team. Uh, I do the work of a whole legal team and, you know, for dealing with Tellus and Hydro and, uh, and so they're just one industry, forestry, fish farm. And, uh, tourism is an industry that is bigger than all of them and could support and take on some of the other ones as well. But we do have a plan and we do want everyone to be at the table and working together. There isn't a reason why, if you live here and work here, you shouldn't contribute, uh, towards the whole ecosystem. And our model, that we're, we're wanting everything that's forshore and is a business that accesses the other nations. We split three ways, and we're promising that. We'll have accountants confirm that and show that. Yeah, so.
That was just my feedback.
Go off on lots. Uh, thank you so much for your input on that.
Maybe you're, you're probably aware, but, um, you know, with, um, the discussion around reconciliation, I mean, the previous council looked seriously like, what's one, at least one thing we can do. And we looked at, um, the opportunity of the Moos property to kind of address management of that in that kind of context. And that is going on, and everything takes so long. As you, you know, you know, like you said, you're pushing the ball uphill. But hopefully, there is a resolution there and a plan that kind of has a satisfaction for, um, you know, the historic heritage interests and the colonization community. And also, its very significant use and, you know, its sense of, uh, of importance. Anderson pointed out Hydro, that, that, but I think you're right. Focusing on the tourism side of it is something that's doable. You've done a lot of really great work. I think there's still some things that need to happen. And we went to UBCM and we talked about the 1% tax on other things. But we also looking at, what about, you know, the parking, the, the, so that, you know? So, you know, there are competing interests, but hopefully, we can, your needs are great.
Sport fishing, they're extracting fish out. We're promising, that's at the Salmon Round Table, we're promising that fully into Salmon Capital projects. And that's just me building a bridge, you know, I have other needs. But, uh, to deal with that user group, all the sporties and all that, the, um, we're keeping that at the round table. Working to implement a rod fee and promising that that goes just all into Salmon Capital projects in the three nations. So, uh, those are, it's to separate those, that's a different industry, trying to bring them all, the sporties, that's kind of part.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Do you have any reports? Unfinished business? Question for you?
Hello?
Hi.
I guess I'm the only one to ask a question. Um, I mean, I, I feel like there's been a lot of really useful information, Bart, just because I was really curious to learn more about it. Being someone who works in the tourism industry and closely with someone who unfortunately is not here today, but a business owner in it, um, there is a big push in at least wildlife guiding to have that kind of recognition. Um, but, I mean, there was a question about how restaurants contribute. I mean, like, how many Cisco traps come through every day in the summer to resupply all these restaurants? I mean, I feel like there is, that's one of the biggest questions is, is, um, you had mentioned that there was an existing process already happening with housing tax. Like, is this something that's actually happening in the process? I think councillor Bart had mentioned that you were talking about reconciliation and having, um, something that community members that were living here were contributing. I'd love to know more about it.
There's the Moos Park Management Plan for that property that is, uh, a plan that's being worked through the district and with TFN as to what it might look like, who's going to manage it, how, et cetera.
Thank you. I mean, I wish I had more questions, um, but it was very informative, I mean, I.
I will, uh, move that we close our meeting to the public pursuant to section 91G of the community charter to discuss matters relating to litigation affecting the municipality.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll just go, you know, I don't need, I don't need a paper.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Do that first, cancel.
Oh, I feel like I have a.